Good afternoon, it is March twenty eighth. Twenty twenty two and it's approximately five thirty P M. And you are in the building committee meeting. And I will be calling vocal, co-chair Lupita Zepeda.
President.
Judge Martinez.
Present.
Jorge J D Delgado.
Present.
And Esteban Aguirre present, you have a form. And then for the committee, item number three. Doctor Madizeta.
Doctor Deharina for the record, this item will be presented by Mr. Salavella on the bell power, bell power improvement.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board for the records as a vice president of finance. This next item is we are asking the board to approve a contract for metal roof restoration and that tower improvements at the south campus. This particular project was added as part of the reallocation of the seven point five million. That had been. We serve for the law enforcement training center project. The amount that was budgeted for this project was seven hundred and fifty thousand. The proposal that we have a. In front of you for consideration is for seven hundred forty five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that is again for the metal roof restoration and the bell tower improvements at the south campus. As part of the. Roofing project at the south campus, we did identify. Improvements that were needed as part of to the middle roofs and additional work that was needed to the bell tower. At the south campus. Now, this this contract is a buy board contract. And the contractor is American contracting and roof LLC. She's a local contractor and it's actually the contractor is currently doing the work on the. Roofs at the south campus. Now. For the scope of work details, I'm going to defer to Mr. Price and he'll give you a brief. Description of what is going to entail as part of this project.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, building committee members. Administration. My name is a matter of vice project manager for Red College. A little description on what the phase of the work will that will take place. As mentioned, we currently have this contractor on site. They do have a contract ongoing right now for a span of a year. So their contract, I believe, is up in July. With thirty day period or punches. Currently, the contract we have right now is covering all of the flat surface areas on campus. This proposal that will be bringing to you for review and approval is for all the standing seat metal roof on the campus. Part of the process that will take place on the metal roof will be. The cleaning, the power washing, the actual metal roof, checking of all the screws, replacement of any screws that are missing. The covering of any identified holes. We have had identified several bullet holes in the past. So we'll have a very close inspection on the metal roof to make sure that we don't have any penetrations caused by this as well. We have a little bit more than three hundred squares that are being considered on the metal roof. Part of the power washing, an additional phase is working a membrane over all the seams of the standing seat metal roof. And then there'll be a another coat that goes on the metal roof. As a primer and then a finish coat on top of that, the finish coat, we've selected a white color to reflect the sun. Which will help the the heat build up on the metal roof, which will help our. Our savings on money on HVAC on the inside of those particular roofs. Once this work takes place. Let me, let me, let me also include that we do have some repairs. On metal, on metal, the fascia trims that were blown off was some of the recent wind damages that we've had at the south campus. This is also included on the scope of work. And then we do have a scope of two different phases on the bell tower. And that's one to cover the 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 bell well that is currently existing. That has a drain, we've had issues there and those issues have only gotten worse as the years have gone by. So our plan is to go ahead and and cover that well with a metal roof and completely enclose it. It does have a hatch for maintenance. So maintenance department will still be able to get in to that void if it needed at any time. And then at the very top of the bell tower, we have. Some standing beams that were placed there agreeing to current design and construction of the campus. It does not have any coating on top of that. Mastery work. And we're also identifying that the water is seeping in through the joints of the block. So what we're doing is we're removing those frames and placing another metal roof on top of that. And completely enclosing that top area. This should eliminate any any additional penetration of water to the bell tower. This process is. Being identified to be used with a car neck roofing material. We do have a twenty year warranty with the manufacturer and a five year warranty on ownership with the actual contractor. I think the timeframe for this scope of work. I believe is. Four months. From the time of work that commences on site. So that's pretty much the the scope of of the work. Once we do this, the south campus will completely be be done with with roofing restoration. So this will benefit the facilities at the south campus. Which are now like seventeen, one eighteen years old with any type of work on the on the metal or or flat roof areas. I'm open to any any questions you can have.
Mr. Chairman. Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, I'm going to give you a brief history. And I'm sure, of course, you already have knowledge about this. When that campus was originally. Contracted to be built. The contractor ended up doing all of that work actually because it was not properly monitored. By, you know, competent individuals just as you are. That contractor took advantage and actually ended up doing things that were frankly. Inferior, I should say, in addition to the fact that. Other faces within the contract did not actually meet what was specifically requested on the contract. They actually ended up reducing some of those in original. Should I say specifications within that contract and I think of course you. During the interim period, you first started monitoring some of that replacements. You already were able to determine that there was major, major faults during the. Replacement of those of. Different items that actually were properly addressed. Obviously, right now, it's it is very important and I do compliment you because you actually do. And have looked after the overall improvements that were done on the just. Should I say recently, but by that I'm talking about just a few years back. And the fact is that you were now monitoring that it is important that we do address these issues. Because as I said, already have acknowledged or said. Some of those faces were actually done in a really, really. By taking advantage, they did not properly do what should have been done from the very beginning. And that that is again part of the reason for it, okay? So that's just a little, a little background, a little detail. That on on history of that particular campus. And one one item here, of course, that I am sure is a a. A typing mistake on it and that is. It says that the. That the debris, all right? Will be properly disposed at property, all right? And it should not be disposed at that property, right? That's item number ten. Okay, I'm sure it is a typo, okay? It will be removed and taken somewhere else, certainly not within the campus, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes J D Delgado.
Thank you, Chair. What's the type of roofing material that we're using?
On the metal roof.
Yes.
On the metal roof, it's car net.
Okay, and is that something that we've used in the past?
Actually, no, they're they're competitors to the product that we're currently using right now, which is Tranco. Apparently, car net manufacturers, the material. And relabels it to Tranco and Tranco sells it under their name.
Wow. Okay, and are there any other types of roofing industrial roofing solutions that we can possibly use? That are beneficial to any new projects moving forward?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a number out there, you know, what we what we look after is quality. Then for the manufacturer to stand behind their product, which is very important and to stand behind their warranty. Which here we're getting a twenty year warranty with the actual manufacturer and with the contractor, we're getting a a five year craftsmanship warranty on them.
Five year what, I'm sorry? Five year what?
Five year, it's a craftsmanship warranty. It's a warranty that comes from the contractor.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and this is with bond money, right?
This is phase three bond money and this would be a buy board contract. And we do have a wide board number already prepared and ready, ready to go.
Any other question? Item number four.
Doctor Deharina for the record, both Orlando Zepeda and Mr. Vice will present to the board members updates on construction.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon again, my office is the record construction project manager for Red College. I have an updated report on construction. And I will explain my slides as I go through them. This is phase three construction bond, we do have one particular project that will come from base two money and I'll identify that project as I go through my power plant. As mentioned, this is phase three construction bond projects. We do have currently an active contract with the contractor that we were just discussing right now. They're currently working on flat roofing, soffits, exterior canopy, LED fixtures. As a campus improvements to improve the quality of the campus as we were briefly discussing earlier. This is a buy board project and it's currently active until the end of summer. We also have the concrete slab for C D L courses that is also an active contract. We do have our documents in order for the contractor to go ahead and and start. And I'll go ahead and and briefly discuss that a little bit more through my slides. We have the Red College South Campus Standing Seat Metal Root Restoration that will be a buy board project that's being discussed today as well. We do have another project, the diesel mechanics and the auto collision expansion project. And that current project is under Frank Arctic. We have the Lamar Rooney of Ghana Environmental Center of Renovation and Editions. We have the Henry Ware Protective Service renovation project. The academic and advanced technology second floor renovation project. And the Luang Garcia renovation project. And that's the particular project that is stage two money. On the roofing improvements to the facilities, I've got a couple of photographs that were taken here recently. This current work that was photographed is here at the actual bookstore. Which had a very roof condition that was very deteriorated and needed to actually be repaired. So the contractor has gone in and taken what we called all the air bubbles off of that roof. The the roof was in really, really bad condition. So we have some work going on right now on this particular roof. The only phases that are pending now is to actually apply the Tranco product. And have it certified once it's completed by by Tranco and contractor. Over to south campus, buildings that are fully completed on the roofing portion is building A. Building B, D, F, and G. We have building C, which is ninety five percent and building E, that is also ninety five percent. Those are not completely completed right now, but they are currently working on them. And what we're doing is we're tapering the roof to actually drain. The water, storm water to the actual drains of the facilities. Which the original contractor, when this building was built back eighteen years ago. Did not take that into consideration. And I mentioned that might have been a shortcut on their part, but we're addressing the issues now. At Fort Macintosh, which respected by the pictures that I have, that currently had a sixty percent completion. And then we have building H, which is the new, the new health building that has no soul. At 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 this time. The socket and LED improvements to the facilities also at the south campus. I've shown you some photographs before of Camilo Prada. I do have some new photographs of the gymnasium, protective service. And the entrance to the gymnasium and you can see some of the socket work being worked on and some of it being completed. Buildings that have been fully completed, completed is Camilo Prada. Which is building D, the Henry Ware Protective Service F. And the J K Thirino Gymnasium, building G, which is in progress right now. Touching again on the concrete slab for the C D L forces. We do have a guaranteed maximum price that was formally approved. The amount of a little under nine hundred and twenty two thousand. The contract has been already prepared and signed by the contractor, which is line different construction in Texas. The notice to proceed has been completed, signed and issued to them. They have issued construction bonds to the college. We do have an official start date of March twenty first of two thousand twenty two. And we do have a substantial completion, which is July nineteenth of twenty twenty two. And a final completion of August eighteenth of twenty twenty two for that particular project. So, any questions?
Yes.
Have they started that project? The. The C D L.
Not official, I have not officially had the contractor mobilized on site, they do have ten days to mobilize. As of the twenty first of March.
Because I hadn't seen anything.
Right, so I constantly check and and they're they will probably mobilize this week. Usually they take about ten days to to mobilize on site. And they'll contact the the architect, the engineer to stake up the property and everything. And then we'll we'll go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
But they're they're definitely, their their time is ticking right now, so they do need to come on site. A little bit more breakdown on the phase three construction bond project. I have included here the type of over the name of the project, which I'll go through the list, the roofing software, make sure it can be LED fixture, campus improvement projects. The buy board project, that's a three point eight million dollar project, that's an active contract. The Red College South Campus Standing Seat Metal Roofing Restoration Project, that will be a buy board project as well. We have a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget on that. The diesel mechanic and auto collision expansion project that has a budget of four point three million. Little Mar Rooney of Ghana Environmental Center Renovation and Edition Project, that's a three point five million dollar budget. And touching on the line for and training center improvements, we do have. The Ruben F C F three renovation project that is phase two money and that we have a budget of one point four. The academic and advanced technology standard renovations to the second floor area, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget on that. And then the. Congress Henry square protective service center shooting range and facility renovations and improvement project. We have a one point five million dollar budget on that particular project. And then finish up.
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming back again to to the Congressman. Shooting range. I have learned from individuals that are knowledgeable in shooting that that range, shooting range was actually. Did not meet the specifications at all whatsoever. But it is frankly needs major if. If if any kind of renovation, it. It it requires tremendous amount of overall improvement and to be specific, actually that facility in itself ought not to be actually. Addressed as a shooting range because it does not meet. The 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 actual requirements that are specified properly, okay? If there's a shooting range, I think we ought to just completely eliminate that possibility of not including a shooting range. In that structure and that building because that building itself does not mean officially the requirements of of having it properly. As a shooting range, I think that that's something that that board ought to consider.
Yeah, you're you're correct, Judge, on that, on that, on those notes. We've identified numerous issues with the shooting range. I believe it was going to take about a little bit less than half a million just to improve the HVAC system to to this basement area for the shooting range. So a decision was made that we were going to go ahead and and renovate the basement area and turn it into tactical training rooms. And remove the shooting range equipment from from the basement area. So we're we are, we are going to have to change the HVAC system, but it'll be reduced to a much lesser demand. Because of the use of the tactical work rooms or workout rooms for them. So that's the scope of work that we do have included for for the protective service facility. So they'll, they, I think they do about twenty days of shooting for their cadets and they will be going to the shooting range on Highway fifty nine, I believe.
Doctor Deharina?
Yeah, three fifty nine.
Thank you, Doctor Deharina for the record, actually Homer just, yeah, answered that, I was going to express that I agree. That shooting range is not conducive to be a functional and safety shooting range, so it is going to be. Converted into a defensive tactic and this is coming from our police. Converted into a defensive tactic and this is coming from our police academy uh faculty and our director. And again, because we only use it for ten days out of the year. Um, it's best to just continue using the outdoor range and it doesn't jeopardize the police academy.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Vice?
Uh, and just to finish up, I do have a brief uh status, uh, current for the uh. For the Rito College South Campus Surveillance Camera Project, uh, and which is phase three money as well. And the current installation status. So we have the contractor by the name of Ray Bar, the installation of the cameras are being done by Global Technology, a local contractor here in Rito. Uh, the cabling for all the facilities have been completed and tested. Cameras for building C, which is one of the largest buildings on campus, have been installed and, and are ready. And they are pending delivery for the remaining cameras for the rest of the cities at this time. Do you have any more questions?
No, sounds good. Anybody? Uh, that's good, Mr. Vice. Any other uh question or anything, Doctor DeGehina?
Um, Mr. Cepeda, on behalf of Mr. Orlando Cepeda will present our internal concern.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Cepeda VP of Finance for the record. Um, as Doctor DeGehina mentioned, Mr. Cepeda was unable to join us this afternoon, but he did send me a quick, uh, the updates of the physical plant projects. And I'll go ahead and quickly share those with you. Uh, currently Physical Plant is working on. About five projects. Uh, the first one is the chapel HVAC system repairs. Uh, the upcasing of the Sierra uh complex shater water supply line. Uh, P fourteen uh remodeling, which is the uh building that will be uh housing the imaginary. Uh, P twenty-four building remodeling, which is the uh DPS building. And the uh paving project uh at both campuses. Uh, the first project uh is the HVAC system repairs at the chapel. Uh, that project uh was approved by the board uh back in February at the cost of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty. We have already issued out the purchase order uh to uh train. Uh, they have uh placed the order on the uh, on the equipment. Uh, the subcontractor is actually beginning work uh this week uh to start with the prep work. Uh, the uh projectic uh completion uh timeframe for this project is eight to nine weeks. Uh, and this is because we are having delays on the equipment. Uh, so we are anticipating that this project will be completed the first or second week of June. Uh, so uh now, uh, we do need to keep in mind that this is the first part of the, of the repairs at the uh. Chapel. We still need to address the floors and the uh roof and uh. Uh, the water damage on the roof and the walls. Uh, again, the recommendation from Physical Plant is to get this first because. There will be uh some movement around of uh to trying to accommodate this equipment, so. Most likely is that the, the floors are going to be damaged during that process, so we want to wait until that work gets completed. To address uh those other items. On the uh Sierra Science Complex, again, um, also this project was approved in February by the board at a cost of two hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and nine dollars. Uh, we have issued the purchase order already for train and uh work uh, uh, the subcontractors are beginning work this week. Uh, this project is expected to be completed in four to five weeks, so we're looking at the first or second week of May. Which is important because uh we will be having this project completed just in time as we're getting ready for the summer days. So again, this is gonna take a little bit less time because there's less equipment uh to be ordered for this project. Uh, as far as the uh Imaginarium project, uh, the board approved us to uh issue a, a contract to the C Mar. Uh. To provide us with a GMES for this project. They have already done the advertising to request quotes or proposals for the project. We are waiting on the GMES. Uh, line makers currently working on giving us that number. Uh, hopefully, we should have something ready to bring back to the board uh at the next work meeting for this project. Uh, for P twenty-four, the DPS building, uh, we have a issued a request for proposals, uh, request, uh, proposals are due uh this uh Wednesday, March thirtieth. Um, as of this morning, we have not received the proposals yet, uh, but we do have uh contractors that are, have been uh. In contact with our purchasing office requesting information regarding this, this project, so hopefully by uh. The due date of March thirtieth, we should have some proposals uh for the board to consider at the next work meeting.
Yes, uh, Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
May I suggest uh for the regular board meeting, uh, uh, Mr. Bella? That put an addendum to the um board meeting where you actually missed all of these items. Because it just says here, construction projects update. But we don't know which ones are anything for us to follow up on it. Uh, I think it would be good for all members of the board to, to, to be more. Uh, aware of the different uh, uh, you know, uh. Facilities that are being addressed and, and being brought up today. I, 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 I personally would appreciate that, sir.
Sure, uh, and what, what we can do for this, this board meeting is we can uh, uh, get copies of the presentations. Uh, and provide them to the board. And I do apologize, uh, again, the, the reason that we don't have this one ready is because. Uh, originally, the board meeting had been set for Wednesday and or, or, um, Mr. Cepeda's intentions were to be here. Fortunately, he wasn't able to be here today, uh, but we'll go ahead and uh make copies for the board and we'll distribute it.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Go ahead, Chair.
Yes, and the, and the last project is the uh. Fort Macintosh and South Campus uh parking lot and street uh. Uh, renovations. Uh, we're also, we also have a, a requested proposals for this project and there are. Uh, we also have a due date of uh Wednesday, March thirtieth. Uh, we do also have uh the. Purchasing office receiving a increase of, about this project from contractors. Now, this is the second time that we've gone up for proposals. The first time around, we only got one proposal and unfortunately, it was incomplete. That's why we could not consider the, that proposal, so we're kinda hoping that we do get uh proposals in this, this, this second time. Uh, so that we can bring them forward to the board for consideration at the next work meeting. And that concludes the items that are currently being worked on by Physical Plant. Any questions?
Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Bella.
Uh, Mr. I just had a question on the, on the paving. Do we have any other ideas if we do not get any proposals?
The next step would be to look at some of the uh state contracts. Hopefully, we can get a contractor to uh buy board or uh any of the other purchasing cooperates.
Okay.
Uh, the, the only thing with that is that most of the time those contractors are from, uh, they're no, they're not locally here.
They're from out of town.
So, so they're from out of town, so uh again.
Should be more expensive.
So hopefully, so hopefully, we can get a, a contractor in, submit a proposal uh for the board to consider.
You ended their buy, go ahead.
Or another suggestion is maybe working with Tech Stop. If they have a contractor locally, I mean, from out of town, but locally working, that maybe we can work with Tech Stop. It's, it's an idea. If we don't get anybody.
Yes, and again.
Very good suggestion, you know.
Thank you.
The local uh highway uh, you know, office can provide with the, with the.
Because they have their contractors.
Local paving contractor that we, it was pretty much better than having somebody from a, a outside. I agree with you.
The, the only thing to consider there is, again, depending on how that contract was uh. With the, the state, uh, if, if they, if we currently have a contractor that's working here locally with uh the state, uh. It all depends on how that contract was negotiated, if it allows us to pay back, uh, back on that, on that contract. But that's something that uh we would review with equal if that option's available, uh, just so that we, we comply with all the purchasing and procurement laws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Any other questions? Okay, that concludes any announcements. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn? There is a motion, second on favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here.